Today is Tuesday, 11th, 11th, approximately eight minutes after four. I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Madam Chair, if you take role, please.
Commissioner Fox.
Present, County Building.
Commissioner Begic.
County Building, here.
Koonin.
Here, County Building.
Commissioner Herrick.
Here, County Building.
Commissioner Redkey.
Here in the Bay County Chambers.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here in Bay County Chambers.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here in the chambers.
All members present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance.
Eternal Father, you have placed in us a world of space and time. Through the events of our lives, you blessed us with your love. Lord, we ask that you will grant to this Board of Commissioners and all of those in authority patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have minutes from 4:13 and 4:20. What should we receive would be in order.
Support.
Any discussion on the minutes? That being said, we have a full house. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Cindy, do we still need roll call?
We do, but we didn't catch who moved to accept those minutes.
Begic and Koonin.
Okay. You keep cutting out on us, sorry. So we start the roll call with Commissioner Redkey today.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Koonin.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
And Krieger.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, minutes approved.
Madam Chair, now we're into citizens input. If there's anyone out there that would like to address the board, now would be the time. So if you'd give me your name and address, that'd be wonderful.
Joseph Hickmatt, the Flamingo Talat 291 South River Road here in Bay City. First, I come to you today with a matter of importance to me and my business. Mr. Krieger, I know you sit on the Visitors and Convention Bureau Board, and I appreciate how hard you and the board do work because we do need tourism in Bay County. The issue is the tourism tax. The original tax from 1974 laid out certain qualifications. And as Mr. Barsha, I know he's listening in somewhere, will tell you, it used to be 10 rooms and over, you would have to pay the accommodation tax because you're a larger property and you would get those tourism stuff. The hope is. When they changed it in 2010, and then enacted it in the tri-county area here in 2011, they changed one line in it from 10 rooms to two rooms. And I have a copy of the Act here, which I can forward to you. As well as, they failed to take out the minimum requirement for the major city of the county. And as of 2020, Bay County and the city of Bay City has fallen to 34,189 people. The requirement to have a Visitors and Convention Bureau, according to Act 245, is 35,000 for the major larger city. So Bay County is proud. You do not meet the qualifications to have a Visitors and Convention Bureau, according to this act. Also in the act, some things that are brought to my attention, she, I was actually sent the act over the weekend, so I took all weekend to review this. Under section 141, one, excuse me, point, 1423, definitions, section E subsection, it's the second line, the Board of Directors is elected by its members, meaning the members will be paying members, which I am. In 11 and 10 years, I've never received a notification of a vote, never received a ballot to vote for any board members. I have been invited to two closed-door board meetings at the invitation of the current CEO of the visitor Great Lakes Visitors and Convention Bureau. I go to the yearly meetings, to the rah-rah sections. That concerns me. If I'm collecting a tax, and actually I don't collect the tax, I just pay it on my 30 days because my business model has changed from transient guest to extended stay. It's the only way I stay in business, like most of the smaller mom and pops in Bay County. Also, in the act, it clearly states 35,000 and less than 45 at the time of the marketing notices filed with the director that the board shall currently level the tax. You don't meet it, so you cannot levy the tax according to Act 245. I mean, 254, excuse me. I do have a copy of the act. And as Mr. Barsha can tell you, anyone that stays in a hotel, anywhere in the state of Michigan, over 30 days, they become a tenant, okay? Which means I'm juggling two different laws. This law, to pay a tax that I have no say in where the money went, then after 30 days, I have to deal with the landlord-tenant laws. So I wear, I have to wear two hats. As you know, as most people in business do, as you know, you men wear a lot of hats too. And looking at the financials from last year, we paid $200 a month to the city of Bay City for a six-by-six kiosk in the city hall. City Hall's been closed since March last year. Guess what we did? We still paid for that six-by-six space. This is tax dollars. You can call it an assessment, but you know, ladies and gentlemen, I've been brought up the old way. If it looks like a duck and acts like a duck, guess what? It quacks. And if it acts like a tax and looks like a tax, it's a tax. So these are public funds that we are giving to this organization, and they're not being frugal with it. Last year, they spent close to $18,000 in automobile expenses. Where you were, I believe you were on the Skype meeting in March, where they stated that they shut down their offices, everybody was working from home, you know, there have been no major meeting planners, there's been no major meeting events. Where'd the $18,000 go? They bought a piece of property here in Bay City that nobody else wanted for $98,000, and actually it lost value last year, and we're paying $2,000 here in taxes. They have a plan to build a building, a lighthouse. That's fine. I asked three times for the performa that shows the data that building and building at that spot and the type of building they want would draw tourism. Good businesses do that. They have a plan. They create a performa, they get their data. And as a paying member, I'm due that data. And I've asked for it three times. Can't get it. So with that, I'm asking the board to either call for a referendum. I mean, if we want to keep the Visitors and Convention Bureau because we need, we need some time to pull to Bay County, that's fine. I'm not against that. I'm against paying for something that I have no say in. Furthermore, as we move on, over the last 10 years, we've lost the pig gig. We've lost a four, what was it, a week-long boat race? Now it's a weekend. We used to have a week-long 4th of July celebration. Now it's two days. What are they doing? Yes, they're promoting the area. But when I go to the website, it refers me back to events in Saginaw. We're paying $35,000 a year for a full-time employee for the Visitors and Convention Bureau of Bay County, and she's working out of the Saginaw office. Why? When everything we're doing here in Bay County gets shipped over to Saginaw, why are we paying somebody $35,000 a year? That's almost $60,000 a year that I've pointed out out of their budget that could go to direct advertising to support the small businesses. I'm from the South End, ladies and gentlemen, we're dying. As of May 16th, we're losing our McDonald's. We've lost Mr. Hot Dogs. We're losing our McDonald's. We lost City Dairy. We've lost Citizens, uh, excuse me, Chemical Bank. We've lost Independent Bank. How many businesses do we have to lose? Does the county have to pick up the tag on businesses and property that aren't paying taxes before we make a decision? I urge you, ladies and gentlemen, either call for a referendum or sit down and come up with a plan that alleviates the tax, this tax where I don't get tourism. Most, Bonnie Lynn doesn't get tourism. Let's use common sense. Yes, she does a great job promoting the area. That's what they're there for. But when I worked in Detroit, I sat on the Visitors and Convention Bureau. And Larry Alexander, the Detroit Visitors and Convention Bureau, looked at us board members and said, you have one job. Put heads in beds. Develop a plan that promotes the area to put heads in beds. Because if you put heads in beds, hotel owners make good money. I did a presentation to the City Council of Danville, Kentucky, a few years back when I worked. And I showed, explained to them one simple fact. When you have healthy hotels, you have a healthy economy foundation. Because that means people are coming to your city. People are spending money in your bars, in your restaurants, and going to events. Last year, we lost 43% of our market share here in Bay County. They have an economic bank account, economic plan bank account. I asked, how can I tap some of that money to improve my property? So guess what? I can pay more taxes. Oh, we don't do that. Can you help me or direct me where I can get some help? We don't do that. It's not our job. And with all due respect to Mr. Barsha's office, I know he's busy, I asked Mr. Barsha the same thing. It's not in his purview. Okay, so if there's not going to be any help for small businesses in Bay County, how do you expect people to make investments in Bay County? Driving in from the South End, I just named off some of the closed-up businesses that we see. As a major investor, pulling in Salzburg, would you want to invest in Bay County if you see there's no support for the small businesses? Turn it around, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Will you, can you leave me some of the documentation on, that'd be great. You can give it to Commissioner Johnson.
I don't know. Have you seen that? Have you got your packet of the financials yet?
No.
Okay. Even in their, this is their marketing plan. And they even state in their marketing plan some challenges. They classify opportunities as implement programs to encourage development of unique diverse businesses with local owners. I reached out to them. They, their answer is, we don't do that.
Could you do me a favor also? If somewhere on some of this documentation, make sure I get your name and phone number.
I'm giving you my solid C, just wait. I'll be behind me. And like I said, I don't know if you've got your packet of the marketing plan, but you might want, when you, when you get it.
I'll, I'll give the whole, Annie.
Okay. And trust me, she does a great job. I'm not at odds with her or her organization. Okay? I'm at odds that I'm having to pay, I get no say. I ask questions, as every taxpayer should do, and I get no answer. Or I get told, don't worry about it. We got it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. Thank you, board members.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Trevor Keyes. I'm the present CEO of Bay Future. And we're the county-wide economic development organization for Bay County, here to help small businesses. So I'm glad you're here today. Since the inception of the organization back in 2004, by the Bay County Commission and the board action that created our organization, with the public sector and the private sector both working together, BFI has assisted in the creation and retention of more than 4,000 jobs and secured capital expenditures from companies building and growing in Bay County to the tune of about $1.5 billion. We're here for your support, and we'll be looking forward to speaking with you. We've been responsible for assisting in more than 200 economic growth projects during that time, too. But not only created opportunities for the Bay County workforce and Bay County families that choose to live, work, worship, and play here, but also these investments have created opportunities for taxable increases to the county as well, which we think is, is a great thing and is part of our, our mission and vision as well. During the Ways and Means Committee meeting last week, you all received 2020 Annual Report in which we talk about pivoting, or over this last year, and looking at supporting small businesses. We were able to do that, and the impact from that was through 12 different supported programs that were executed, either through grants that we applied for, grants that we administered to nearly 400 companies to the tune of about $2 million. Moving into 2021, we were able to add additional funds into that effort to support even more businesses going through kind of the hard times, obviously, that COVID's brought to our community. And we would like to continue to be able to do that in partnership with Bay County. I'm asking you today to please vote to pass the resolution supported by the Bay County Administration to reestablish the agreement between Bay Future and Bay County, Resolution Number 202174. The hope is that we will be able to administer these grants cooperatively together moving forward as well, along with continuing to do the things that we had historically been able to do, which is securing jobs and investment through Bay County when we're able to move past and through the pandemic. I want to thank you for your support of Bay Future and economic growth and for the betterment of all of Bay County. I'll be here to answer any questions as well. Thank you so much.
So Trevor, let me, let me just address that Resolution 2021-74. At this point, I'm pulling that from the agenda item. It isn't that the Commissioners don't support Bay Future. It's just that with all the discussions that we had in the last Ways and Means, the concerns that came up as far as pulling the cap, going to a three-year extension and not, and leaving it open-ended, there, we still have a lot of questions. So at this point, we will hopefully have more information on the funds that are coming up and what's going to be available. So I'm hoping that maybe we'll be able to address this come June. So I don't mean to pop your bubble at this moment, but I'm not comfortable with where we're at with this. And I am pulling that from the agenda item today.
Yep, I'm always happy to answer any questions. You know, what we're looking to do is to, you know, put into place an agreement that has been lapsed over the next, or over the last seven years. It's the literal exact same agreement. The only change in language is that it doesn't cap an economic development investment of.
And not to carry on the discussion with public input, but.
I apologize.
You still have the funds that are coming to you as we've paid the last seven years. It's just I'm not in a position right now that I would sign anything that would lock us into the contract that's being proposed. So I'm hoping with the aid of working with some of the Commissioners and Mr. Redmond and yourself in looking into the percentage of what we're going to be able to afford, that's how we're going to go forward. Okay?
And happy to answer any questions. This, this agreement doesn't lock the county into any additional number, just the same number that they had supported economic development in the past.
I understand. Public input is to give us information, it's not to carry on the.
I apologize, thank you.
Not a problem.
Not a question, not for, not a question.
Sure.
What if we want to hold on? You can just pull it without people voting?
Correct.
So that's your choice?
Correct.
So you can pull this whole, we can just cancel the meeting then?
No, I'm not canceling the meeting.
That's what you're saying. You said, you're saying you can pull, if you can pull anything, why don't you pull 70, 71, 72? You know, it's on, it's on the agenda. If they want to refer it, we'll refer it. If people don't want to refer it, we won't refer it. But you should give us a chance, not just make an arbitrary decision like that. So you said, you referred to, you're referring to you and not us. It's a seven-member board. Is that correct?
My understanding is the chairman.
No, no, you don't, because you're making an arbitrary decision for every one of us, and all of us don't agree. And I understand that we all don't agree, but let's find out where we don't agree.
Well.
So I want to know, I want to know parliamentarianism, what we can do.
Um, well, let's, I'm not sure. I believe it's the chairman's right to pull any item off the agenda, so.
I believe.
It's happened before, and it's not like you're doing something out of the ordinary.
I believe means I don't know, that's like I think. That's what that means.
Let's, I'm not sure. Amber Johnson, are you available?
Sure. I think this is, is a question for the parliamentarian. I can refer you to your Board Rules Article 10, Section 5, which states that any item placed on the board agenda must be approved for inclusion on the agenda by the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners or the chairperson of the appropriate committee. I think that there is a question there as to, this has already been placed on the board agenda. So I don't know if it is a different issue to place it on the agenda versus remove it from the agenda once it's already been included. That would be a question that would probably be more appropriate for your parliamentarian. It's Article 10, Agenda Subsection 5.
Thank you. Mr. Redmond.
Ballot is still on the table unless somebody moves to refer or table it. The chair can't just cut off the debate.
Okay. There was no debate. There was no debate.
While they were talking.
The chair pulled that item.
It wasn't pulled before the meeting.
It might be, if you have that, it might be better if you made a motion to refer.
I'll make a motion to refer to a later date after we have the opportunity to sit and discuss the money, what we can do with the money. We've got no information right now. And that's not to say that Bay Futures would not be part of this at all. All it is saying is that, I don't, I'm not comfortable going into an agreement that's not specifically stated what they're going to get for what they do, number one. And we have, we don't, there's not a Commissioner here that has sat with staff to determine what we can possibly do with that money. There's a number of things we can do with it. We haven't had any public input from anybody in the county as well. I would think that we as a board should have the opportunity to understand the ramifications of this money and then extend it out to the public. We haven't done that, so we don't even know. So we're not in any position to agree to any type of an agreement with anybody at this time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the reason you want to end the debate, it's just a matter of how you want to do that. But I understand because I have questions on the wording of the last couple sentences in the agreement. But that's what we should address. And you still need a motion to refer it.
I made that motion to refer.
Don't you have to wait till it comes up on the agenda? That would seem to be the appropriate time. When it comes up on the agenda, that would be the appropriate time.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. So Trevor, you can wait till we get the last agenda item. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herrick. Um, no one else from the public? Let's move into petitions and communications. We have a presentation from Chris Pinter, Executive Director of Bay Airnet Behavioral Health. Afternoon.
Afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me okay? Is there my mask? Okay. I wanted to just provide an update, you know, with three Commissioners that came in this year. So they've, they've had the, they benefited from not hearing me speak twice a year to the Commission, so I'll try to make up for lost time today. So I provided a little bit of information for your information today, just to kind of summarize what we've been doing in the last year. I think the last time I was here was in March, just before everything went south, and we had a lot of the closure orders and the executive orders and things. So essentially, in the last year, we've, we've seen a reduction in the number of people that we've served. We generally serve about 5,000 residents a year. That went down to just over 4,500, which is about a 10% reduction. Now, that's been a statewide trend, so every county has had reductions in number of people served. We've done an investigation in Bay County, and what we found, our Airnet county numbers have actually went up, believe it or not, even during COVID. What we found is that a lot of, we have a lot of people who come in for family and individual counseling, and they're just not comfortable meeting a new therapist or over the teleconferencing. They would rather wait till they can get an in-person appointment, which I totally appreciate, you know, and understand. So that seems to be driving why our numbers went down a little bit in the last year. We're really hoping that as things open up more in the state and that more people are vaccinated, we can get back to more routine in-person services, and that should get us back up to our, our historical leadership statewide. Just so you know, hereon County is the one who backed in front of us this last year, but they know that I'm gunning for them in 2022. So, so I will make sure I report that out to the Commission the next time. We've always been proud of the number of people we're able to serve because it shows that we're meeting our public obligations. We also have had to take some, implement some changes, it was like all-county operations, so none of this is going to be rocket science or new information to you, but we've replaced a lot of our in-person with telehealth service delivery. We've had to use personal protective equipment. We've built quite a stockpile because we've had to just send it out to our group homes because they're doing personal care with people all the time. In some cases, those folks would test positive for COVID, so we'd have to have gowns, they'd have to have shields, they'd have to have gloves, they'd have to have the whole gamut to, to do that. And so far, that's been, that's went okay in terms of, we haven't lost any homes, and we haven't, we haven't lost too many staff or anything, just deciding it's not worth it. And we've been able to keep people out of the hospital, but it's a real, it's a real fragile economy, as all of you know, and it's almost impossible for us to recruit direct care staff. And then to tell them, well, and you might have to do it with people who've got the virus, and you might have to expose your family members when you come home from work to the virus. A lot of people were real interested necessarily in doing that, but fortunately, we've been able to provide more support to retain the people we have, the people who know how to take care of people. And that's mostly been, we, the boards have proved us pushing out as much money as we can to keep them in their jobs, just recognizing this is point-to-point until our state can reopen and the immediate danger of the coronavirus has passed, which we're hoping will be soon, but we were hoping that a year ago this time. At least we have the vaccinations now, and, and the fatality rate has steadily been going down, even with more infections in March. So those are good news. One of the things that we are proud of is we did partner with Bay County Health Department to help them do COVID vaccinations once the vaccines started becoming available in December. So we've targeted people that were with disabilities, with the mental health conditions, people connected with us who historically don't access medical care, preventive care, and public health has, they trained us on using the vaccines. They stored the vaccines for us until we had our own industrial-sized storage freezer, and we have contributed to about, we've done about just over 1,000 doses ourselves. About 650 people have had both through Bay Airnet, with about 350 people have had just the first dose that were scheduling to get the next dose. But I can't say enough about Joel and his staff, how helpful they were, and we were able to reach out to AFC homes, group homes, people who would never have gotten a vaccination and probably would have died because of their disabilities and medical conditions. So we really made a point of trying to work together on that. We've done some pop-up clinics out in Co-Collin, up in Standish. We've done some pop-up clinics out in Cocon, up in Standish. In addition, we've done mobile clinics on-site at some of our group homes, so we've been real pleased with. And in fact, about a month ago, we had an outbreak at one of our group homes, and it was all staff. The six disabled residents there had all been vaccinated, none of them tested positive. So we figured that was a good incentive for staff to get their vaccination if they hadn't already. So we were real pleased with that. We've also partnered with public health for our North Bay location, which is the Olprset School, for those of you from Bay City or Cocon. We've had that approved for now almost a year as an emergency shelter, just in case we had some of these group homes collapse. You know, if all their staff quit, and they've got six people there that need 24/7 care, we've got to, you know, we can't go home at five, we have to get everybody into care. So we prepared North Bay as an emergency shelter with a stockpile of supplies and resources. We had public health go through it and inspect it for us. So we've had that on hold for as long as we needed to, but until we get out of the woods, we just think we need to, we may need a kind of facility available. And so that's what we've done with that. Another thing we did, which we were proud of, is we did become a CDC-approved COVID vaccination site. Of course, they haven't sent us any vaccinations. They told us we're approved, but you can't have any yet. Bay County, though, could then send us some, which they have. And we did get about 200, about 400 doses specific to census tracts in Aernach and Bay County that scored higher on the social vulnerability index. That was back in early March. So mostly for Bay County, it would have been inside the city, on the east side of the river, south of Trumbull, down to Salisbury or 22nd. Those are areas that score higher on unemployment, access to healthcare, poverty, different types of measures that the state uses to determine the vulnerability of the community. So we were able to do, target people in those areas that had an association with us and offer to get them a vaccine, get a vaccine delivered to them. We did the same for Aernach County, it was mostly northwest part of Aernach, which is Moffett Adams and Clayton Townships and Standish proper. But we were real proud that we were able to do that and bring some of that, some more of those doses, and that's another 400 doses Bay County Health Department didn't have to do. So we were pleased about that. We still do a lot of work with the jail and with the court. The Furbay Judge is now able to do all her judicial hearings for people in McLaren's Inpatient Unit on our board room. We have telehealth equipment there, so she's able to link in from her office, and they bring the individual up and his counsel up from the hospital, so that way she doesn't have to bring him into the court or reduce the, keep up social distancing and mitigate the virus. We still provide a lot of services right in the county jail for the jail administrator, and out at the juvenile detention center, we've got dedicated staff that provide services there to try to help support the county staff. And we've been a longtime participant in the stepping up initiative with both the drug court and the county sheriff, and we're always trying to look at other ways we can use that to leverage our substance abuse treatment locally. That's kind of my, my update on communal health operations, if anyone has any questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Begit?
I don't know if we're going to talk about state legislation and 298, and we're still pursuing that.
That's the next page, yes, I will, sir. Absolutely. Just take a breath, just that part. I promised Mr. Coon and Mr. Herr I'd be brief. Okay, so on page two, I also sent an update on behavioral health redesign. Now, the commissioners that have been in public service for a long time are tired of hearing about this, but about five years ago, there was a massive privatization effort at the statewide to basically get rid of the county mental health programs, hand all the money over to Blue Cross, and then Blue Cross would do right by the counties and by the jails and by the schools, and they'd have an incentive to make sure the counties were happy with what they were doing, which would be different than their incentives for taking care of their members now, but anyway, let's not get into that. This county, just like Aernach County, took strong positions on that through resolution and opposed a lot of those private state efforts. And in fact, it was Lieutenant Governor Calley who really put that to bed before he left office and said, you know, this is just not a good idea, that's not how I do it. And so we were real appreciative of that. In the meantime, the coronavirus kind of took everybody's attention at the state level. So everything about redesign, changing system, came to a halt, and everything focused on, get a vaccine, get people safe, try to prevent people from dying. In the meantime, there's two plans that have emerged, one in the Senate and one in the House, that wants to revisit the design of the behavioral health system. The first plan from the Senate is sponsored by Senator Shurkey, it's exactly what the 298 was. He's, he's not changed his game plan at all, he very much believes that this should be a privatization. It's significant amount of support from the health plans, and so he believes in what they do, and he believes it should be state policy. That's all I can really say about it, other than it's not a good plan, less people will be served, less communities will be served. And when they tried that exact approach in Iowa a few years ago, you had rural hospitals go out of business, you had providers leave the market, you had people have a lot of denied claims, and at the end of the first three years, each year, the state had to bail out the health plans that were going to save them money. So it's just not a good idea. So the other plan that's being proposed, and actually Commissioner Begit made sure Mac understood where he was at with some of the privatization efforts a few years ago, which we appreciated. In the meantime, Representative Whiteford in the House, she's also introduced, and I don't have a lot of that in here because it's, neither of these bills have been formally introduced. We've seen markups, they send markups out to everybody. So when I say introduced, actually, no, it's not going to sign a number because they're sending out drafts and markups and, you know, trial balloons, whatever word you want to use. She's got a bill, she wants to get rid of the 10 regions, of which were in the big massive mid-state region with Lansing and Jackson-Hisdale and Saginaw and Central Michigan and everybody else. She wants to get rid of that and just have one for the state. Now, that's not necessarily undoable, as long as that region is accountable to the 83 counties, like the current regions are. So I think there's some potential there, provided that whatever they want to do gets more money in the hands of service and then at the county level. If their, if their plan is neutral or takes money away from service delivery, then it's not a good plan. And that's the backbone of what we're doing. And to change it, just to shift the money around and have less for people to get services is just not a good, it's just not good public policy. So I feel a little more comfortable as she listens to us. She, she, she's in the region in Lake Shore where they were, the state was going to sue them, and they were going to sue them, and nobody wants to work with Kent and all this kind of stuff. So I think she's trying to solve a local problem and what she's seen. So I have a little bit more faith in her sincerity, that she's trying to make things better, she's trying to make things stronger at the county level if she can. So I think we should be open to that, and I'm more than willing to come back when both bills are actually introduced and there's activity on the floor and give the commission an update. I didn't want to jump the gun because, you know, you see markups, sometimes they never get, they never get introduced. You see markups, nothing ever happens. But I'm pretty convinced Senator Shurkey will get his through the Senate, because he's a majority leader, he's got the votes, so he'll at least get it through the Senate. What we're not sure about is where the administration stands, because the governor has been silent on all these. So I feel like we're in a strong position to support the counties, we just need to do our diligence on the observant.
Mr. Begit?
So Mac is monitoring the bills, and our platform, we have a helpful team in Services Committee, it's kind of up for our platform committee in about a week. And, you know, they're keeping an eye, they don't want local control lost, they want to keep the local control there. And so they're, they're watching it closely, so.
Yes, they are, and they've been good supporters for us throughout this whole battle. Mac has, he's been with us.
Very good. Anyone else? Mr. Pinter, thank you very much for all your information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the commission for your time.
Have a good afternoon. Next, we have Barry Schmidt. He's with the Coalition of Coordination of the Bay County Preservation Network. Where did you go? There you are.
I'm here.
Welcome.
Get me started right away there. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to talk to you about underage drinking, which is a huge concern for us here at the Bay County Prevention Network. Just really quick, we've been around for about 30 years, doing a lot of different things regarding underage drinking. I want to give you the latest results from the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth, was prior to COVID, I want to make that very clear, this is prior to COVID, as well as the number that I'll talk about, the highest in the county, there's 38 counties that took the survey. And these are just really quick. We are the highest county in the state for individuals that are in high school that drank alcohol on the last 30 days. We are the second highest county in the state for who have ever used alcohol in, once again, as a high school student in the state. Then you take a look at those who've drank before age 13, and the reason that we talk about age 13 really important is that those that consume alcohol 13 or below have a 40% chance of having an alcohol problem in their lifetime. Then you take a look at the percentage of four, what's called binge drinking, four or more in a row for a female, five or more in a row for a male, and that's within the, within that couple hours during the last 30 days. You can see here, we can, we have gone up, we've been trending up this last time here as well. And then you take a look at this for the 11th grader specifically, and you can see there's a 13.7% increase in this data here. So we take a little bit of a look at the consequences. Among students who had sexual intercourse in the last 90 days, drank alcohol before the last, you can see that has trended up across from 2015 all the way to 2020. And we take a look at those who've been physically forced to have sexual intercourse when they didn't want to. This is domestic violence-type situations. You can see that 1 in 10 of our high school girls have had to deal with this. And once again, looking at physically hurt, and it may not be directly due to alcohol, but it could be indirectly, and more than 1 in 10 of our high school females have had to deal with this dating violence in the last year. Then we take a look at driving, that's always a big predictor as well. And we take a look at the percentage of students who drove a car when they've been drinking one more times in the last three days, and as you can see, we went up dramatically in the 11th grade. As well as, if you want to look at just the 6.4, so the 5.1, because at 2017, 2019, there was not a true counting report access available to us, but we do have organizations, schools that partner with us and allow us to use their data to have this report. Then you take a look at, maybe not necessarily driving themselves, but riding in a car with someone, once again, you can see that has gone up again as well for the 11th grade. Then we take a look in this, I think Mr. Pinter would be very interested in this data here, and you look at those who felt sad or depressed every day for the last two weeks or more and stopped doing any activity. If you look at that on that blue column there, you'll see that is over 45%. And even the considered suicide as well is still pretty high, but the blue line is considerably continuing to go up even from 2011, 2012. Then we take a look at the access, because that is something, another concern that we have to take a look at. And I can say right now, they're not getting it from stores, so buyers and restaurants are doing a great job of checking ID, things like that, but we do have someone else giving it to them. And take them from a family member. Let me show you this data right here, you'll see that the 11th grade is going down, but look at the ninth grade. This is the ninth grade where they're getting drank at home in the last 30 days. So once again, parents are believing that whether it's a rite of passage or whatever that may be, but they're allowing the consume at home. Now, I remind you, this is all prior to COVID, that's, that's a key, because we're hearing about 11-year-olds, 12-year-olds during this whole COVID situation that were daydrinking. So we don't have the data to prove it yet, but those are just things we perfect individuals in the field. Let me take a look at perception of harm. Well, we can tell you that this is a good number, we're seeing a decrease of ease of access, that's good. However, we have some bad news. Those students that think that drinking five or more alcoholic drinks in a row once or twice each weekend to be a moderate great risk has continued to go down. And then once again, you take a look, this one really is concerning for me, those that drinking one or two alcoholic drinks nearly every single day to be a moderate great risk, you can see as well that that's trending down. So the red flags that we look for, we're looking at issues regarding these issues, and number one is sexual activity. As you can see, that was a concern, drinking and driving, not just drinking and driving, but riding with someone. Binge drinking is another concern as well, as you can see that binge drinking is continuing to still trend, trend up, domestic violence as well. And then finally, the addiction, and we're seeing that to be more, more a concern as we continue moving through that. We don't necessarily have numbers for that group because the data is going to look at treatment, and a lot of young people necessarily don't access treatment, and now when you receive a minor possession of alcohol, it's not a misdemeanor anymore, it's a civil infraction, which means that they're less likely to have to deal with any education and have less court involvement as well. So what can you do, once again, in your power, limit any outlet density, assuring public health is in all the policies, funding any compliance checks. We work very well with the Sheriff's Department and Troy Cunningham, discourage high-risk drinking. We're not saying that adults can't drink, make that very clear, or we're trying to discourage high-risk drinking, as well as encouraging messaging around wanting to have environments and opportunities to make those appropriate choices, but also that they can have fun with all substances and things like that. So that was my presentation, I was asked to make it short, and I did, so I will stop sharing, there's my contact information. If anybody wants any of these slides, I can provide them as well. So I'll open up if anybody has any questions for me.
Question from Mr. Schmidt. It looks like we're good. Thank you so very much for sharing this information, and if you want to get in contact with you.
I'll put my information in the chat box as well, so they'll have it. And it was on the screen, and I know that Executive Barsha has my email as well, so.
Okay. Very good. Good afternoon. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have a letter informing us of the Bay Medical Care Facility process for the governor's appointment to the Bay County Department of Health and Human Services. A motion to receive the letter would be in order?
So would. A support.
Discussion. I would like to add that those applications will be done through the DHS Director, which happens to be Ms. Katie Spearling, so that if you are interested, if you'll contact her, she will make these applications available. So it does not come through the county, it actually will come through Bay Aernach DHS Director. Very good. Moving into reports and resolutions, we'll move into Ways and Means with Commissioner Fox. Oh, I'm sorry. So we've had our lack of discussion for a vote, we'll go to county clerk, if you take role, please.
Okay, point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Motion should be to receive, which one?
We're talking about the Bay Medical Care Facility, the appointment for the governor.
Okay, you didn't receive the other two presentations?
No, we did not, so let's go back. And we'll do a motion to receive the presentation from Chris Pinter. Discussion.
I'll just make it yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Sorry for the mask.
Role call, please.
Thank you, starting with Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Begit?
Yes.
Hunnens?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
The motion to receive the presentation of Mr. Pinter, passed, 78, 0 nays.
Thank you. Next will be the presentation by Barry Schmidt. Motion to receive would be in order.
Make the motion.
Support.
So it's Commissioner Johnson made the motion, Commissioner Radke supported.
You. Start the voting with Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Begit?
Yes.
Hunnens?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Krieger?
Yes.
Motion to receive the presentation of Mr. Schmidt carries by 78, 0 nays. Motion to receive the presentation of Mr. Schmidt, carried by 7 yeas, 0 nays.
Thank you. Next, we have the letter for applications for appointment for the governor for the Bay Medical Care Facility, motion to receive would be in order?
I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Coonan, supported by Commissioner Bigick. Role call, please.
Starting with Commissioner Bigick, please.
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Motion to receive that letter, carried by 7 yeas, 0 nays, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we'll move into reports and resolutions, and that takes us to ways and means with Commissioner Fox.
Resolution number 2021-66, the Crime Victim Rights Grant, I move that resolution.
Support, Eric.
Discussion with none, role call, please.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution carried, 7 yeas, 0 nays, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution number 2021-67, Victims of Crimes Act Grant, I move that resolution.
Support, Coonan.
Discussion with none, all those, we'll, role call, please.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
7 yeas, 0 nays, resolution adopted.
Resolution number 2021-68, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Inmate Services Contract, I move that resolution.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Johnson. Discussion with none, role call, please.
Commissioner Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution approved, 7 yeas, 0 nays.
Resolution number 2021-69, the Consulting Services Agreement with MGT of America Consulting, I move that resolution.
Support, Radke.
Discussion with none, role call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
7 yeas, 0 nays, carried, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution number 2021-70, the Letter of Intent to Region 7 Area Agency on Aging, I move that resolution.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion with none, role call, please.
Commissioner Fox, please.
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution approved, 7 yeas, 0 nays, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution number 2021-71, Payables, I move that resolution.
Support, Coonan.
Discussion with none, role call, please.
Commissioner Bigick, please.
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
7 yeas, 0 nays, resolution approved.
Resolution number 2021-72, the Air Advantage Internet Fiber Agreement, I move that resolution.
Support, Bigick.
Discussion with none, role call, please.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
And Chair Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution carried, 7 yeas, 0 nays.
Resolution number 2021-73, the Temporary Oncology Training Maintenance Heavy Equipment Operator, I move that resolution.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion with none, role call, please.
Commissioner Herrick, please.
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
7 yeas, 0 nays, resolution adopted.
And Resolution number 2021-74, the Renewal Extension Agreement with Bay Future, I move that resolution.
Support, Radke.
Discussion, Commissioner Coonan. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refer this to the June's full board meeting, so that we can have some discussion on the specifics of the program and on the specifics of this Is there a support?
I'll support.
Discussion.
I would like to just note, Bay County and Bay Future, we have partnered together to look for opportunities, not only to have business retention in this area, but also to attract new businesses. Bay Future, they are the experts, they are invested in our community, and they're not going anywhere.
Agreed. Commissioner Fox.
Yeah, I have a question, so looking at the resolution, just to make sure I understand it, removing the cap on the $50,000, however, that is our commitment for three years, these references to the American Rescue Plan Act does not commit any funds to that, nor does it commit us to using Bay Future to oversee any projects, right? It just recognizes that that could potentially happen if we remove the cap, but nothing happens without board approval, is that correct? Amber, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Coonan. Well, any type of an agreement that I've ever seen here, there are specifics, we don't even know what Bay Futures is going to charge the taxpayers, and we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to ensure that we're managing their dollars, number one, and we, and we don't even have the specifics of the program. So, Trevor, what do you normally charge to administer?
No charge, there's no standard number that we charge to administer, if not to mention...
Trevor, if you want to come up to the floor, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, there's no specific number that we charge as far as administration is concerned as it relates to any of these programs that we've administered over COVID as an example.
Did you approach the city on this same thing, administering their money? Did you approach the city to administer their money as well?
To, for the American Rescue Plan Act?
I would think so, or, there was a fee there, wasn't there?
Yeah, yes, but they didn't make any commitment, we haven't proposed, we already have an agreement with the city to do economic development.
You've got an agreement with us to do economic development as well?
Yeah.
I'm talking about the fee for administering this $10 million next this year and $10 million next year, you're not doing that for nothing.
We haven't even had those conversations yet, Commissioner.
Then why would we agree to it?
Maybe I don't read this correctly, but I don't read anything in here that commits us to hiring them to administer it, it just says, you know, hey, yes, we have this rescue plan money, okay, but by lifting the cap, if we so choose, we can hire them to administer it, but it does not bind us to do that, so I'm confused as to the argument, I really And maybe that should be removed from there, because it sounds like it's confusing to me, but I don't read that here.
That's why we refer till next month, so we can get all the specifics ironed out. And make whatever changes need to be done. So Commissioner Bigick?
So I would point out that that's a, whereas, that's not anything about the resolve, the rough resolve, number two specifically says 50,000 compensation cap currently found to be removed to allow the board discretion in any other future contribution, that's not the American Rescue Plan, that's any future, so the whereas, it don't, don't carry over, it's just the resolves that are carried, there's nothing about the American Rescue Plan in the resolve, but I think we're just renewing our contract with them, we'll begin congruence later, but that will be up to us to decide how much we pay them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you got a lot of hands up on your screen.
Yep, yep. Next, we'll go to County Executive Barsha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would hope that we can act, act expeditiously, you know, on this resolution, if, I don't suppose that one month would hurt terribly, however, Mr. Hickmont's comments under a public comment at the beginning of the meeting is fairly indicative of the kind of reaction we're getting from small businesses, from Northern Bay County all the way down to Franklin Parish Township, and I hope that the board will realize that we have a real need to help get people back on their feet, and it's not just employers, it's the employees who work at those small and medium-sized businesses. Commissioner Coonan is, you know, legitimately interested in what the guidelines are, and we just received those yesterday, the expanded guideline on the use of the local fiscal recovery fund grants, it's 151 pages, it specifies what exactly Congress and President Biden intended the money to be used for, so I ask Rebecca to prepare some additional copies, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the commissioners will try to have a copy for each of you, can start perusing the 151 pages, but the U.S. Department of Treasury has now issued those specific guidelines, and I can say that I know some commissioners and myself have already been approached by the public for needs in their township or their city, and the public is a lot more aware than I think some of us would think about this rescue plan, and many of them are, are, you know, inquiring as to whether they qualify, and I, my belief is that, and I've been an ex-official member of the board of Bay Future for four years, they do an excellent job, they administered over $2 million of community development block grant funding from the city of Bay City to businesses throughout Bay City, and that helped keep some of them alive, and it's going, it's going to be a lifeline for many of them, so I just hope that, you know, if it's postponed, that we don't forget about it, or not have the time to read the 151 pages, so that we'll realize what, very specifically, we can spend this money on.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to try to clarify something, because there does appear to be some confusion, this is not an agreement for Bay Future to administer any of the American Rescue Fund monies, this is simply to renew the agreement that we currently had with Bay Future that expired, it would be virtually the same agreement that we've had since, I believe, 2010, the only change to that agreement would be that we would pay them the base $50,000 that we have been every year, but we would remove the language that requires us to be capped at $50,000, that is the only change to the existing agreement, it does not bind the board to anything, no additional funds would be given nor budgeted unless the board were to come back and approve those funds, it does not do anything other than renew the existing agreement that we had that's expired and remove the $50,000 cap, so if at some point in time you want to use your discharge to give more money, you can do that without having to amend the existing agreement.
Thank you. Commissioner Coonan. Then by next month, they should be able to rewrite this resolution to reflect that.
I think it does.
Rewrite it to reflect it. Mr. Redmond.
Yeah, the only concern I have is in the last sentence of the first resolve, where it's automatically extended, we don't do that with any agreement.
We do, we do do that with many agreements, it's called an evergreen clause, this gives both parties an opportunity to decline to renew so long as they give notice.
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, one second.
I think you should stick with the three-year term, instead of having it automatically extended.
Amber, you have a comment?
Oh, yes, just that there would be a provision that if either party did not wish to extend it, all they would have to do is give the other party notification in writing.
Well, when you eliminate that part of it, it comes up every three years, we don't forget about it in three years.
Any other discussion? With that being said, role call, please.
Yeah, role call on the motion to refer, or we start with Commissioner Reddick?
Mr. Coonan's motion to refer.
Commissioner Reddick?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
No.
Bigick?
No.
Coonan?
Yes.
Garrett? And Krieger?
Yes.
Motion to refer, three yes or no.
Okay, so next is the motion that was made by Commissioner Fox, and it was seconded by Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Is there any desire to eliminate the automatically extended? I guess Commissioner Bigick.
The way I read it, we have the option to opt out, I mean, we have to be aware that the three years is up, but hopefully somebody in the administration would tell us that it's three years is up, and we can not renew it, I mean, it puts it on us a little bit more, I agree, but still, we should be able to pick that up, I hope.
Doesn't look like there's a desire to do, to do that, Mr. Redmond, so, I'm sorry, the person who supported Commissioner Fox's motion?
Radke.
Reddick.
Commissioner Reddick, okay. Any other discussion on the issue? If not, role call, please.
Commissioner Johnson? Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Coonan?
No.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
And Krieger?
No.
5 yeas, 2 nays, resolution carried.
Commissioner Fox?
I'm done.
Very good.
My work is done, referring back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox, so we'll move into Personnel, Human Services, Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing at this time.
Very good, easy afternoon for you.
Yeah, we took care of it before.
Under Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Coonan. Reports of the County Executive, Jim, you got anything?
Uh, yes, just a couple of things, just a couple of things, I'd like to thank Kristen, Dan, Jeremy, and all of the seasonal staff at the Bay County Golf Course, we had a great early spring, the golf course opened on March 20th, and so far this year, 3,832 rounds, 3,67 carts and 85 memberships have been brought in for a total of $129,000 revenue thus far this year, in comparison to this date last year, we're up significantly on rounds, carts, and up 32 memberships at this point in the year, and I want to remember that this time last year, we weren't allowed to use carts, this is going to be another great year, hopefully for the Bay County Golf Course, I'd also like to just mention the status of an increasing number, I guess, of dogs that are being brought to the shelter.
people bringing in their dogs and pets, that the resumption of evictions, as we have seen the number of dogs being turned into the county, has escalated by about 32% this year. Cats are up about 10%. And we only know that what people tell us, but evictions and other such life changes are a major factor. One thing that cat owners could do to help the shelter and the staff would be to try to plan for these types of changes and communicate a little bit earlier to help them navigate the surge that we've seen recently and the assistance we've provided for taking in pets that are no longer wanted by their owners so that we can hopefully reconnect them to an adoptive family that will provide them love and care. I just thought I'd mention those two positive things. And also mention that the staff at the animal shelter has been working very, very hard, very dedicated, and we're getting through this. As you know, we had a small outbreak of parvo, and the staff contained it, and it's no longer an issue, and the park is open, and I believe it only affected one or two dogs. So we're in good shape at the shelter, even though we're seeing.
I can just set up for the next 2020-75.
Support.
Discussion with none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Conan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Radke, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Johnson?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven yeas, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Resolution 2021-76, Raleigh Burger Retirement Recognition. I move that resolution.
Support.
Herrick. Discussion. Commissioner Bigick?
He's a good friend of mine. He's a hardworking guy. We hung out together when we were younger. I won't tell you what we all did, but he's a good guy. Tipped me out of jail. No.
Wow. Publicly stated.
Most of the time.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Congratulations to him.
Congrats.
Here's Bigick. Roll call, please.
This roll call will begin with Commissioner Bigick, please.
Yes.
Conan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Honoring Mr. Burger. Approved.
Resolution 2021-77, reimbursement to the American Legion for great marker flags for 2021. I move this resolution.
Support. Bigick.
Discussion with none. Roll call, please.
This roll call will begin with Commissioner Bigick, please.
Yes.
Conan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Honoring Mr. Burger. Approved.
Resolution 2021-77, reimbursement to the American Legion for great marker flags for 2021. I move this resolution.
Support. Bigick.
Discussion with none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Conan?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Conan?
Yes.
And Krieger?